Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. And they can also be found at the back of the room. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco-Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call votes? Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas. Present. And with that, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll move on with our agenda, moving on to item number four. In our agenda, Consent Agenda, all items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. For A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for June 5th and June 12th. Item B, Bills and Communications Approving Claims on the Total Amount of Item C, Resolution Number 4551 Lease Agreement for the Reddingness Center with Washington State Military Department. Item D, Resolution Number 4352 Memorandum of Agreement Quad-Cities Stormwater and Water Conservation Education. Item E, Resolution Number 4353 Small Works Bid Award Pasco PWRF Field Pivot Number 2 Pivot Replacement. Item F, Resolution Number 4355 Updated Bid Award Argent Road Widening Phase 3. Item G, Reappointment of Joint Housing Authority Board. Item H, Cancellation of July 3rd, 2023 Council Meeting. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that. Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Mayor, before we get to that, Mr. Ferguson, I noticed that we did move something from the Consent Agenda to the unfinished business. I realize this is an approval of the Consent Agenda as it's written. I just want to make sure that we're not somewhere straying off here that's going to get us in trouble.
No, we should be good.
Okay, thanks.
There's a motion and a second. Can I get roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas.
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And with that, we move on to our next item on the agenda, item number five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements None Listed. And item six, Public Comment. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff, staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Before I call you all to the podium for your three minutes, you will be notified by Ms. Debbie of your time. You do have a reminder of 15 seconds before your three minutes are up. I would like to ask you to summarize your comments. Please stay within the three minutes. And with that, does anyone in council chambers wish to address council? Raise your hand or step up to the podium. Gentlemen in the far back first, and then it's your turn, sir. If you can please turn on your microphone. If you can turn on the microphone, there's a button right on the dash. There you go. Thank you.
Tom Kidwell, 4320, you're right. I brought you the book on Brochi, and I really feel that Rick really did a poor job telling you what all they had done and what all they hadn't done. Because Brochi had really been complete in all forms to be brought in, and I would appreciate it if you'd read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, do you still want to make a comment? Yeah, go ahead. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark McKee, 4308 Sedona Drive, Pasco. A couple items I'd like to address. First, I'd like to say thank you. We love Pasco. We're Clean Sweep Tri-Cities. It's a ministry, a nonprofit ministry that gives back to the community. We have recently gotten a phone call from the city stating we need to permit each and every one of our outreaches that are held in the C2 area zone of Pasco. What our outreaches consist of, our food, basic necessities, and a litter pickup. We always incorporate a litter pickup when we hold our outreaches in the lower, in the East Pasco area. In doing so, we provide community service hours for Benton County, Franklin, Benton and Franklin County Drug Court, Recovery Court, Mental Health Court, District Court. We're an alternative sentencing program in Idaho, Washington, California, and Oregon. So the fruit of what we do is huge, and it's all glory to God. But having to permit each and every one of our outreaches, 80% of our outreaches are held in Pasco. And why? Because the people and the opportunities are there. The homeless, the litter, it's all there and it's growing. And we can't end it. None of us can. But there will come a day when our Lord Jesus Christ returns, and he will, and we'll all be good then. But until then, we've got our work cut out. And we're out there, we're ministering on the streets. I met with Troy Hindren, and we came to agreement that $15 would be a fee that we would pay for each outreach scheduled 30 days in advance. Now, we have a water ministry that we've done for three years now. Kennewick, Richland are all about it. They're all on board. When temps reach 100 degrees plus, we go out with water and we serve the community, the people, the homeless, and anybody that's there in the parks that need water or ice. We have small businesses have partnered with us. It's became quite the deal. And it's literally to save lives and to help people during that time. And Clean Sweep is, we love doing it. We don't, we haven't ever asked anything of the city to do so. But if we need to permit it, it's going to kind of be a little bit of a hindrance at times. I just think that it's gotten kind of a rock dropped in a pond, and I don't know if the City of Pasco realizes how big the pond was. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? If you'd like to state your name and address, please?
My name is David Klug. I understand you guys are going to be talking a little bit about transportation and some bike path improvements. I would like to make a comment on some of the paths you've got now. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago it was, I was involved in an accident. I hit a vehicle bollard off of Road 54, and the grass is overgrown around the path. I mean, I've been by this thing probably 1,000 times. But on this particular day, the grass is overgrown, and you round the corner, there's an outhouse on the corner, and all it took was somebody to slam the outhouse door. And I looked, and then there were some walkers ahead of me, and I scanned over the top of the post and hit it probably going 15 miles an hour, broke my nose. My front teeth are sore. I'm lucky I didn't break my damn neck. But that one, and there's another one in Kennewick. There's one under the 240 Bridge on the Akama River that those two, that one, you come down a hill and you're going from light to shade, and those bollards are inside the shade. So you can, you know, you're coming off that hill, you know, 15, 20 miles an hour and into the shade, and they're hard to see. And I, you know, I made a comment on the bicycle chat group that I belong to, and, you know, just, there's like 40 people that made comments, and, you know, probably about 15 or 20 of them know people that have hurt themselves on these vehicle bollards. And, you know, there's a couple of people that, you know, not locally, but have gotten killed on these things, you know. So I'd ask you guys, you know, to think about, you know, the new bike paths and where you just place those bollards and think about the bike riders. I mean, if somebody put a, you know, telephone pole in the middle of the freeway and just painted it yellow, I mean, people would be up in arms. I mean, that's basically what you got. You've got, you know, life-threatening obstacles in a bike path. People are trying to ride for their health, you know. You know, they can get crippled on them things, you know, and people have been. But, you know, that particular one on Road 54, there's distractions or swedes, the paint, the paint, you know, approaching it. There's no warning signs, no nothing. I mean, you just, you come around the corner and it's there, you know. I'd appreciate if you guys would think about that, and that's really all I've got, I guess. But I consider myself lucky that, you know, I didn't hurt myself worse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You probably don't need this mic because I talk too loud. But my name's Lynn McKee, and I'm from Pasco, and I've lived here for 44 years. It's a great city. At this point in time in our city's life, we've had an issue with homeless people, obviously. Clean Sweep is out there on the street with the people. We are not out there to enable them. We're not out there to disable them. We are out there to try to encourage them, give them hope, and help them find a way to get off the streets. Our water ministry is part of that, and so is our outreach ministries. We reach each people. We encourage them to find help. We have people on our team who are experts in that so that they can help these people find where they need to go. Clean Sweep is not just an ordinary group. We care about this community. I've raised five children in this community. I have 15 grandchildren and 36 great-grandchildren, and the majority of them live in this community. I do not want to see this community go to pot. I saw a terrible thing on Facebook a while ago about San Francisco. Whether or not it was real or true, I don't know, but it was scary because the drugs had overtaken the city. Okay, I realize that we have a drug problem here. But I also look back and think maybe we need to look back at some of our policies and update them a little bit. The water barrel policy was from 1982, not the water barrel, excuse me, the event policy. My water barrels are very precious to me. It's my program. I started it with Mark. It means a lot. Water is not to be a comfort. It is to be a lifesaver. When the weather hits triple digits, it's dangerous. The water not only goes for those on the street as far as homeless or houseless, as we call them, our houseless friends, it's also for every individual that's walking up and down that street, everybody. We just helped with a huge food giveaway over at Kurtzman's Park on Saturday. We had a water barrel sitting there beside us for everybody. It was amazing how many people used that water. It was awesome. And then if you'd like to come out and really do something, come out and have a conversation with somebody over a water barrel.
You have 15 seconds left.
You will learn a lot from somebody just relaxing and having a bottle of water. You know, it beats the daylights out of bottle of booze. Thank you for letting me talk, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comments? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Darrell Coleman. I'm just going to read something.
Sure.
This whole thing with Pasco I heard about kind of hit me a little different than most. The presence of Clean Sweep in Pasco didn't just save my life, but it flipped the script and spun my life in a direction I didn't ever imagine. Meeting Mark and this group of neon green shirts, people outside of the gates of the mission, weeks after trying and failing to take my own life. I had no one. I was totally alone in my mind. And then Jesus sent an army to Pasco. And Mark had asked me out to talk and go for a ride in his boat at one of the outreaches when I was living in the mission. And on our way, he took me to breakfast, and we went out and filled those water barrels. That was the first time I'd encountered them. Then we talked about life and Jesus and the future. I was totally done at that point, but Jesus wasn't, and Mark kept reminding me of that, a lot. I didn't believe him that it was possible. I went from knowing just a few people to a lot more. It'll be almost two years, matter of fact, it's about two years right now that since I met Mark and all these people on Clean Sweep. It's, they are... Sorry, I have to wear my glasses. These are beautiful people on Clean Sweep. They're Clean Sweep family that are more to me than just family. And I'm not the only one. There has, that saved a life. It's changed and transformed not just mine, but I'm just one of hundreds. And I'm just out there a lot, I guess. And I do that because... Sorry. And I do that because... So the thought of Pasco living and putting restrictions on Clean Sweep presence in Pasco makes me think, what if they weren't there at the place and time when I first met them? I can guarantee I wouldn't be here today, and that's just facts. I held off a little putting out this, wanting to talk about this because I needed to pray about it. And because if I make a mess, I needed to make sure Jesus makes a message. As much as this whole thing hits me one way, I do believe that Jesus is setting this up for...
15 seconds left.
Something different. But my point is, is I'm one of the ones that were out there, and they made a real big difference in my life. And I see it change, and it makes a difference in other people's lives. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm James Hamilton, and I'm a member of Clean Sweep, but I'm also involved with another organization here in town, St. Vincent de Paul's Food Bank and Clothing. I'm one of the people that are on the street almost daily. Our organization, as well as them, are here to assist and help the poor and the homeless. There's approximately 1,300 or 1,400 people that go through St. Vincent de Paul every Wednesday, including tomorrow. A good number of them are homeless. And we give them a bag with a little bottle of water, some fruit, peanuts, crackers, something to get them through the day. I've been at St. Vincent this week, and it may be abnormal, maybe four or five times. And there are people that come to the gate, and they're hungry, and they're thirsty. And I think, where can they get water in this city? Where can they get water? There's one water fountain at Peanut Park. Has a little dog bowl at the bottom. And the city took the time to make that available so they could put the big bottles underneath it. There's room for that. Where else can you get water in this city? We're thinking about giving out little plastic containers to the homeless so that when they can find water, they can put it in their pocket or their pack. And the one little bottle of water that we provide doesn't last very long. I have put water in the water barrel last year. And I'm giving out water on the street when I see people. I give them a little packet of food and tell them, please come to the food bank on Wednesday because there's more food there, and there's now medical care. There's a medical van that comes twice a month with the doctor, and it's free. And there's books for the children. But where do they get water? And if you're homeless, where do you go? You go where you find food and where you find water. We're trying to get them to come to the food bank so that they can be helped, so they can find assistance. They can be directed to individuals that they, help them go up the ladder. If they can't find water, what do they do? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Sure, go ahead, and then gentleman in the back.
My name is Dori Drago. My brother Mark started Clean Sweep four years ago. He had six followers. He has 3.8 million followers today. He has saved so many people off the street. Darrell was just one of them. The Darrell that came up, he was on the street, strung out. Mark took him out in the boat, just showed him a little bit of love, gave him a bottle of water, some food. You know, we're just asking. Just let us, let us prevent Pasco from turning into LA. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm John Sheline, 3130 Varney Lane. I want to echo the sentiments of all these people. They did an amazing job. They're doing amazing things for Pasco. I work for B4 Development along with Steve Baumann, and I'm an owner's rep and represent Snake River Ag and Steve West. I want to just do a little history lesson for just one second. On December 5th, 2022, we brought a public hearing regarding the request for Snake River Ag to vacate a portion of Oregon Street and East A Street at the very corner. The matter was continued to a city council workshop on February 13th, 2023 to allow the city, at their request, to find more information regarding that vacation request. That then wasn't brought again until June 5th of 2023, when the matter was brought before the city council again. At that time, the concerns of the city were brought forward, and they shared that they would recommend denial of that right-of-way. During the public hearing, Mr. Baumann expressed his support for that right-of-way and distributed packets of information showing a timeline of emails and communication back and forth. In the public hearing, it was noted that the response to the email from the city, Paul Gonseth from WashDOT, stated they had reviewed their vacation request and found that the property was not needed for current or future operations for State Right Route 397. They are the lead agency on this property. That email was in response to the city acknowledging that it was not theirs to give to Mr. West, and they would handle that through WashDOT. Then on June 5th, Mayor Protem Maloney moved, and it was seconded by councilmember Milne, to continue the proposed right-of-way vacation to June 20th, 2023 council meeting. It was approved with a six-to-one vote. It should be noted that the right-of-way was left off of today's agenda until we heard at 2:34 PM that it would be on, but they were going to recommend it being pushed to July 13th. Now, continuing to push this matter off simply for the city to get more information so that they can win their battle seems unacceptable to me. I can only assume that the city staff did not fully acknowledge and respect the directive in which you, as a city council, gave to them at the last meeting. It's not intended for this to continue indefinitely until the city staff has gathered enough information for denial. Tonight, you're going to pass a transportation improvement process. In that, you will notice that between 2024 and 2029, there is nothing that is said for transportation improvement on Oregon and A Street.
I'll ask you to wrap up your comments, please. You have 15 seconds.
I'm wrapping them up. WashDOT stated that that is not needed. The city has stated that it was WashDOT's to decide, and we request that you make that motion tonight and that we actually move on this tonight and not move it to next month.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll move on with our agenda items. So we'll move on with our agenda. Item number seven, Reports From Committees and/or Officers. Do we have any other, any council members wishing to report on any meetings or events you may have attended? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Just briefly, we had the Public Facility District meeting earlier today. They're going through their process to establish how they're going to approach the building of a water park. So a lot of internal mechanations going on with that. So a lot of effort being put into figuring out what their rules are that they're going to apply by. Things that we, as a city, have had in place for, you know, since our, to some extent, since our foundation, with a variety of changes, they really have never had to deal with. So they have a lot of work to do to play catch-up and get all their ducks in order. So it's a slow process, but they're moving through it. So it sounds like, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend the entire meeting today. It sounds like they're looking through alternative methods for constructing the facility rather than the typical process that we go through for most construction here at the city. So we'll continue to see more progress on that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to share on any meetings or events? I'll start it off, and I'm pretty sure Councilman Brown will add a little bit more. Saturday, we had the Juneteenth Celebration or Fun Day over at Kurtzman Park. I was out there reading a proclamation, again acknowledging the history, the importance and the history of our community being united and celebrating different history, different heritage, different cultures. It was a huge event. I don't know how many people were out there, but it was definitely bigger than last year. There's a lot of food. There was food distribution as well. And the new pageant winner for the Juneteenth Pageant was named. And so I'll just pass it over to Councilman Brown. And then I'll come back and circle back to you, Mayor Protem Maloney. But if you would like to add a little bit more about the celebrations, I was there briefly. I saw everybody singing and dancing and eating, so it looked very fun.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. It was a real blessed event, is what I'll call it. Just being able to share the legacy and the history behind Juneteenth was a privilege. It was well-received. Mayor is correct. It was larger than last year. There was quite a lot of diversity, and I was pleased to see that. There was a lot of engagement. Quite a lot of diversity and I was pleased to see that, um, there was a lot of engagement. And my keyword I always love to see is a lot of unity and love and just. You know, just really engaging with, with one another regardless of what your difference may be. On that day, it was realized that. That emancipation procre- proclamation was. It just leaves you speechless, I mean, the history was there, it was posted on the wall, as you share that information. And, um, imparting to young people and you continue that legacy slash movement. It was very impactful to see the entrance of the people that were there, so. Kudos to the Juneteenth Committee and Mayor is right, on Friday night, they had the Juneteenth Pageant, which they have every year. A new, uh, queen was crowned, um, yours truly and the co- emcee was the emcees for the evening. Very impactful, very emotional to see these young ladies move into the next transition of their life. Understanding that they came from a very rich history, so it was just very impactful and. I appreciate the city being there, there was city staff there, the police officers there, we're not gonna call a whole list, but the staff showed up. And it was just very impressive this year, so to the community, um, I just say thank you for showing up and being a part of. A great, um, Juneteenth for twenty twenty-three, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, sorry to have a quick callback, um, and thank you for sharing on that, my, my, my wife and my oldest daughter were able to join, but unfortunately, I was not. I was feeling under the weather that day and was not able to join this, the, the celebration I have in the years past, it is. It's a, it, it's a really good event and I am so proud of, to ha- to be hosting it in Pasco. And had an opportunity to share with most of my coworkers that we have one of the largest and the longest running Juneteenth celebrations in the entire Northwest. Um, so. Um. A whirlwind thing happened last week, um, and I had to fill in for, uh, for the mayor with a visit by Senator Cantwell. Um, uh, she was in town, uh, for a variety of reasons, but she was over to take a look at, uh, meeting with the Port of Pasco. To talk about Dairy Gold and the other industrial agricultural facility, facilities that are being built. Uh, specifically, she was able to help get, um, congressionally directed funding to, um, to extend rail line to help serve the Ryman Industrial Center. So she was there to take a look at that, um, I had the opportunity along with City Manager Lincoln to, um. To share some about the process water reuse facility and how big of an investment the city of Pasco is doing into, in for the infrastructure. Um, out for, to support our ag industrial, um, um, area out there, so, um. Of course, it always comes with asking for more money, so the, the, the hope is, and she had some indications and she was directing her staff. To look into some areas where we might be able to, to pry free some federal dollars to help, um, um. To help fund that project and relieve some of the burden that we're putting on our, uh, processes out there, so. Um, it was, she's, she's a sharp lady, um, and then they were paying close attention to. All what we were trying to do out there, so hopefully that will, that will pry a couple more dollars free and, and help us there, so, so wanna share that with you all, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, I do wanna circle back and, and say that, um, I'm very proud to see that city of Pasco staff. All departments were in representation the day of Juneteenth, um, I saw Parks and Rec, Jesse did a very good job. Uh, Code Enforcement was out there informing, educating, thank you again for all those projects. Last but not least, Fire and, uh, our PD were out there also, uh, educating and just connecting with the community. Awesome work that the city does representing, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item number, um, eight. Hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there too. We do actually have a hearing, uh, so public hearing for resolution number forty-three fifty-six adopting. Twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine, six-year transportation improvement plan, and before I open this hearing, I will pass it over to. Jacob, if you'd like to interim Director Gonzalez, if you'd like to give us a, an update.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Members of Council, uh, the purpose of this item again is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed, uh, transportation improvement plan for years. Twenty, uh, twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine, um, uh, under RCW thirty-five seventy-seven zero one zero, the city is required to develop and adopt. The six-year transportation improvement plan or TIP, um, to act as a guide for the coordinated development of a city's transportation system. Um, this plan, uh, proposed is consistent with Pasco's comprehensive plan and the transportation, uh, system master plan, which was adopted last fall. Uh, projects that tip will be incorporated into the annual capital improvement plan as well. Uh, brief summary about, uh, this year's proposal, uh, the projects, uh, there's over seven, there's, there are seventy-seven projects, fifteen of them are new to the tip. Uh, project maps and descriptions are, are attached to the staff report and include a web-based map that provide a description of each project and their location in the city. Uh, some of the projects on the tip this year include annual efforts such as the annual pavement preservation program. Uh, or they are citywide, such as a citywide traffic signal improvement, um, effort. Um, other projects are associated as part of, uh, recently adopted, uh, major planning efforts, this includes the downtown Pasco master plan. Um, and in that you'll see that, uh, the tip incorporates a series of projects in and around the downtown to increase safety, access and connectivity. On the other side of the city, the projects identified at the tip include those identified in the recently completed Broadmore Master Plan, and those include several projects that increase capacity. Um, and address bicycle and pedestrian, uh, uh, projects as well. City staff presented the six-year tip at the council workshop on June fifth. And, uh, staff highlights that, uh, while the plan remains unchanged, comments and concerns expressed regarding neighborhood traffic calming measures or those related to bike and pet improvements. Um, uh, are and can be accommodated and prioritized, uh, in this effort and other planning efforts, in particular. Uh, staff notes that the Public Works Department is initiating the first, um, citywide speed study. And the result of that effort will identify neighborhoods or corridors in the city that, uh, will best, uh, be, uh, utilized for, um. Uh, identified for, uh, improvements addressing, uh, uh, speed safety, um, and, uh, and, uh, access. And, uh, the mobility projects, um, identified in the downtown plan also increase connectivity as mentioned earlier in and around the downtown area. Um, staff's working, uh, for an applic- on an application to the twenty twenty-four block rent, Community Development Block Rent Program. Um, and that'll be the first time we've already utilized that effort for the tip, um, or related to, uh, enhancements of, to identify projects across the city. To begin implementing and initiating, initiating neighborhood traffic calming measures or, or safety efforts, um, across the city. Um, staff is also, um, able to, uh, take additional comments on the tip, um, as always. Um, after the, uh, uh, resolution. Um, and prepare, uh, an earlier, uh, uh, proposal for council for consideration and next year's effort, so. Rather than bringing this to you in June of twenty twenty-five, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four. Um, staff can prepare a tip much earlier in the year and, uh, begin to collect comments earlier in the process. And, and make any necessary changes, so, um, staff welcomes public input and council feedback on the proposal for the six-year tip. Um, and a resolution for approval is attached to the staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob, do we have any questions or comments from council before I open this to the public? Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you Mayor Barajas, um, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez for listening to introductory comments, um. I, I would like to save my comments until afterwards, just to make sure and see if there's anything else reflected, I don't wanna comment on, uh, the pub- from public comments, but I do have some that I'd like to say before I.
Sure.
Uh, make any motions, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, um, this public hearing is now open and I will. Call upon anyone from council, if you wish to make a statement, please step forward to the mi- um, mic and state your name and address for the record.
There, John Sheline, thirty-one thirty, Varney Lane, I wanna reemphasize the fact that on this tip. Uh, there is no, um, needed improvements on Oregon and A Street according to the city of Pasco. Through twenty twenty-nine. I'd also like to address, um, there's a couple of different, um, people that we represent. And some of these new roads will impact them directly on undeveloped land in which they do have, and. Um, it seems a little presumptive that the roads would look the way they are exactly. Um, until we go through the process and some of that undeveloped land, we'd like to make sure that, that, that we are not. Legally required to do exactly what is pictured on that until we actually go through the process with the city, so I just wanted that on record.
Thank you, does anyone else wish to make a statement? On this item? Second call for statements on this item? Third and final call. Seeing none or hearing none, uh, this hearing is now closed. Are there any comments from council, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, so one thing that, um, I, I did have some email exchanges and conversations with, um, interim director Gonzalez, um, bef- prior to this meeting. Um, but one thing that we had mentioned that I brought up two, two weeks ago was, um, the connection between downtown and the river. Um, and try to understand as we're talking about in our downtown master plan and others, um, that we need to increase our bike and pet connections to our downtown. Um. Um. Between the downtown and the river, and, um, I would note that it has not been added to this list, um, at this time. I know that we need to approve this, we have a ticking time clock of the end of this month, I believe, um, if I understood our, uh, two weeks ago meeting. So I do not wanna hold this up, but I would note that, um, in spite of concerns raised and comments raised, there, nothing was adjusted in the plan since our last meeting. So, um, I am, that does concern me, um, because these are, these plans are the city's way of setting our priorities. And so when we approve this, we are providing direction to staff, go do these things. Um, and so for to have this not incorporate our feedback, um, you know, as late as it got in front of us, nonetheless, our, our feedback is, I think, critical to these processes. Um, so I am disappointed that none of our comments were, were incorporated. And I look for the other ways that we may be able to incorporate it, either through updates of this, uh, plan, um, in, in an interim portion or some other way. Of making sure that our priorities for transportation are reflected in our planning as a city council. So I will not hold up this process, but, um, I just wanna be, be clear with, with the public and, um, with staff and my fellow council members of, of. Um, kind of my frustrations that some of our comments were not incorporated. Uh, the other thing I would like to do is, I'd like to, um, ask staff if we could please follow up on, um, the gentleman's comments about, in terms of, I believe, the Broadmore area and the. The traffic planning in that area, of there's a grid-like pattern and such, um, can we speak to how that's set in stone or not set in stone? How does that from compared to this plan, is that map something that is, um, set in stone or is this a? Conceptual map of, of locations and sort of what staff would like to see out of this?
It, uh, specifically to the Broadmore area, yes, tho- those, those alignments, um, while they can deviate a little bit. Generally, that grid-like pattern will exist in, in Broadmore area, a lot of that is associated with the, uh, the, the TIF that was adopted and the plan. Um, and all the regulations adopted, um, based on the vision for Broadmore, um, but those projects in, in Broadmore and elsewhere in the city, uh, the specific alignment. They can deviate a, a little bit, um, more information and more review will be, uh, determined about, uh, those specifics at the time of a project submittal of our land use action, for example. So for, for now, they act as a guide, but once we get to a specific project application, that's when further refinement can be, uh, uh, considered and accommodated.
So just, just, uh, let me reflect that back to you, make sure I understand properly, um, so these maps in here are not binding maps, but these are conceptual maps. Um, to show the, and the intent of the city, not necessarily the exact, uh, geographic location of every one of those roads.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I guess I'll clarify that, um, not the precise location, but certainly in the general vicinity is what we expect to see.
Understood, as we've approved in the Broadmore Master Plan, the Transportation System Master Plan, the, um, and the, um. Oh gosh, and then, and the tip itself, where we, where we look for a certain amount of density and, and layout. Is that, is that a fair statement of those other documents that we reviewed, this sort of thing?
Correct.
Great, thank you, uh, that's all the comments and questions I have.
Any other comments from council members? Mayor, uh, sorry. Mr. Brown.
Hey, it's up to you.
Mr. Brown.
Just a comment slash clarification, so as Protem, uh, Maloney mentioned that. Our comments was not incorporated, is, is that, if that's correct. How do we move on this without that?
Yeah, the, the, the tip, uh, identifies specific projects that have been identified up to this point for the next six years, so. Um, additional, uh, planning efforts or evaluations will be necessary to identify other specific projects to. Um, address those, um, those concerns expressed by council, particularly related to connections, uh, between the Columbia River and the Sacagawea Heritage Trail in our downtown. Um, some of that may, uh, uh, come earlier than, um, uh, come sooner than later, uh, based on the implementation efforts. Um, uh, ongoing with the downtown master plan, so through the continuation of those efforts and public engagement, um. Uh, we haven't yet initiated those efforts, but those are certainly part of our downtown implementation planning. Um, so over a series of engagement and stakeholder input, um, uh, opportunities will likely be able to identify specific projects to address. Uh, those concerns related to, uh, the lack of connections between the river and the downtown.
No, thank you, so just, just that I, I really, really get it, is that, so if the comments. Or suggestions or recommendations are not there now, would the language change? To consider what was proposed by the council? Because I understand what you're telling, I'm not putting you in a hot seat, but what you're saying is. I don't see, I wouldn't see that anywhere, that. It's even being entertained in the process, if that makes sense.
Y- yes, those, those comments are, 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 um, certainly considered and, and prioritized by staff.
So being able to read that, in what form would that look like?
Yeah, so, uh, the, with particular to the concerns related, the connection of the downtown to the river, the, the downtown plan was adopted roughly six, seven months ago. And the implementation of that planning effort started about two months ago in earnest, and so. It'll, it'll likely take a series of public engagement efforts to work with, uh, neighborhood businesses, particularly along tenth. Um, and Sixth Avenue and Clark, Columbia, et cetera, uh, to identify what projects, uh. The public and our stakeholders are most, um, interested in, in addressing those, those concerns, though that effort has not yet started and has not yet been completed, but I think. As we move forward in implementing the downtown plan, those projects will begin to, uh, identify themselves, uh, based on what that, that stakeholder work looks like. Uh, but, but, uh, the implementation of the plan is, has, um, has just begin, uh, been underway. So it'll take some time for us to get those, um, back on the, or onto the tip and as expressed, um, in the staff presentation. Staff can certainly bring a much earlier version of the proposed tip for twenty twenty-four, earlier in the process in twenty twenty-four. Uh, to give council some idea of what that looks like, at least at that time, and then come back, um, we're, we are not restricted to only holding one public hearing. So we can certainly hold as many a- as we need to, to make sure that there's community buy-in and support for the proposed transportation improvement plan.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, much respect to all the work, I just, if I'm not clear. You know. It's gonna be tough to vote on it, if I don't, if it's not clear and I don't understand, so you all do magnificent work, but. Um, thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Roach. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will jump on this bandwagon just as, um. Just as another point of consideration so that it's clear to staff that there is, uh. One hundred percent. Support for, for bicycle pedestrian access along the river, it's our asset. Um, it's a recreation, it's good for our health. Um, the, um, interim director Gonzalez, I wanna say that my time on the planning commission. I can't remember the exact year, whether it was two thousand twelve or thirteen. But prior to your time with the city, uh, city staff, that we have adopted a, a, a bicycle. Plan and it's never really been fully embraced or implemented. And it's something that, you know, I take stock of just because that's something I do for recreation with my family and pay attention to as a driver on the road, and so. I see that there are places in the tip, um, the connectivity from Sacagawea Trail. To the extension of Road Forty East up to, uh, East Lewis Street. So I'm appreciative of that, but love, would love to see that continue to loop around and include all those areas that you spoke about on Sixth and Tenth and. Um, Clark. And really that it is a priority for me, um, I wanna just pay kudos to staff and this, um. GIS tool that they're using in the interactive process of looking up these, um. Transportation improvement projects by regions in the city, I really appreciate that and that gives. Me a really good sense of organized view of how to view these and I, I hope that's accessible to the public as well, that's awesome. Um, I will say that, you know. the, the projects that have been completed, all of transportation is so important, right? Because it impacts that area, those residents who are accessing it in the ways that they're accessing it. And so it's hard to know which ones um, are higher level priorities than others. And so that's my question to you, as we look through this. You know, I see that they're cataloged by like one point zero one, but how do we know as council what the priority level is of these transportation projects?
Uh, um, yeah, that's actually been a discussion uh, amongst staff over the past several weeks regarding how do we want to prioritize projects in, in the TIP and along with any of the projects that we have identified here at the city. Um, ob- obviously, uh, addressing non-motorized um, transportation is, is critical, along with um, access and safety. And I think um, as we move forward um, with uh, up- upcoming um, efforts associated with the TIP or any uh, planning-related efforts regarding transportation, we can begin to tie those back to city council goals, uh, those adopted by the city in its comprehensive plan or transportation plan and build um, uh, po- potentially a draft prioritization list of, of what that looks like. And, and if that receives a, a, if, if, if that aligns with council's vision, then we can certainly, and we'll, we'll bring that back to council.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I, I like the, the filter of, of public safety, especially for pedestrians and cyclists. Um, and I see that throughout each of these different projects in crosswalks and lighting around crosswalks. Um, improvements in ADA, especially at Sylvester. I mean, that is one place that makes me, the overpass at Sylvester Street really nervous for those that are crossing, um, and especially heading east, because you get that, you kind of lose sight of what's on, down on, down the hill. Um, and then, I guess what I'll say is that the one thing that another bike path-related uh, areas that I see, the removal of uh, the levees as identified as a need between fifty-four and, and sixty-eight, something like that. Um, and I'm curious how this intersects with the, uh, the TIP. And that is signage or um, updating of our municipal codes that let people know whether they're Pasco residents or they're visiting from one of the other cities and they're riding around, you know, using motorized vehicles on the bike path. The four, uh, I saw four-wheelers this last weekend on Father's Day, and I was terribly worried for who they might encounter. Um, stroller, you know, uh, somebody who has, has heart of hearing and going for a jog. So I'm just curious, does this identify anything like that for us um, as a priority?
I don't want to speak to the plan, but I can speak that staff are researching trail speed limits now. We'll be presenting that to council in the near future for ideas about that. And we've also restarted our park ranger program, which will be doing additional park ranger patrols, primarily uh, Saturdays, hopefully the whole path end to end, she-wanted way park. So hopefully that'll improve those areas, but plan-wise, I'll have to let Jacob answer.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, there are, um, there is a, a substantial um, effort underway that just began, um, with city staff working um, uh, to update our development engineering standards, um, and that may be able to accommodate some of what uh, you, you, you've expressed, uh, Councilwoman Roach.
I see it intersecting with the transportation improvement plan, especially as that is one of the areas that I think people might need some education of what is and isn't allowed. Um, in what direction they're supposed to go by striping, just like we stripe on roads, um, and making sure that those are up to date. Those pavements get a lot of heat and they're getting a lot of, I feel like since COVID, people are just really taken to the bike path, and it's great. Um, but not on four-wheelers, so. Um, that is all I have in terms of input for staff on this.
Any other comments from other council members? All right, thank you. Well, there's been discussion on this, definitely. Um, can we go into a motion?
Yes, before I, before I make a motion, I just want to say that um, to, to be fully clear and transparent to this council, um, I intend to vote for this in spite of the fact that I will, I will have some frustrations. So, um, just to be a hundred percent transparent with everyone where I stand. Um, all right, I move to a, uh, to move to approve resolution number four, three, five, six, adopting the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pasco.
There's motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're moving on to our next item on the agenda, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Uh, item nine A, resolution number forty-three fifty-seven, amendment number two to McKay-Sposito Professional Services Agreement for the Lewis Street Corridor, Second and Fifth Avenue Improvements Project Plan, and Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are presenting to you the second amendment to our professional services agreement for McKay-Sposito for Lewis Street Corridor improvements. As you may remember, we had started this project in early mid, I believe, mid twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we had a PSA with the consultant that was selected, and we did outreach and some planning effort um, to provide a series of alternatives for the corridor section. And this was ahead of having a final master plan. Uh, there were needs for additional outreach and additional planning level efforts. So we uh, approve amendment number one to the contract to allow some of the contracted funds to be able to be allocated to early tasks. And um, with that being done, uh, there was a decision made by council to put the project on hold so that really allow for the planning process to happen as a whole for the complete downtown. So the project has been on hold since, and we are now with the downtown master plan being completed and all the outreach having done, a clear vision for the corridor. We're now ready to resume sto- design. And uh, what we are presenting to you is um, is supplement to the existing um, PSA, which would allow for full design. Uh, it also adjusts some of the rates to account for the idling time that happened and all the inflation that has happened in the last two years. And what I want to bring to your attention, there's a very detailed list of what items are included in the amendment, what type of work is, is going to be provided, what elements were beyond the original scope. But I want to bring to your attention, this project uh, is definitely a project that if we were signing a PSA today, uh, the overall cost of the PSA is very reasonable for the overall cost of construction of the project. So I want to just give you that peace of mind, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from, from any council members? Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, um, Ms. Sarah for, for the introductory comments. So I just want to be clear that this bullet, set of bullet points is um, in alignment with the downtown master plan. I believe, for example, they had, um, the, in the downtown master plan, they have a conceptual festival street connecting Peanuts Park North and South. Um, this has all those sort of elements in it.
That is correct.
Excellent. Obviously, I had a lot of feedback the first round, and I appreciate that we're at a spot that better reflects what our, our downtown community is asking for. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll turn it over to the public. Are there any members in the chambers that wish to make a comment on this particular item? Second call. Third and final call. Hearing nothing, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four, three, five, seven, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two for the professional services agreement with McKay-Sposito for the Lewis Street Corridor, Second to Fifth Avenue Improvements.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our, our next item on the agenda. Resolution number forty-three fifty-four, change order number six for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plan Phase Two, and again, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening again. We are presenting to you for approval, change order number six for West Pasco Water Treatment Plan Improvements Phase Two. This change order addresses the relocation of a fuel tank and some um, additional coatings to some of the um, may I remember all the language? Um, uh, hardware, and uh, some relocation of lines, additional pavement that is being disrupted in order to um, perform this relocation. As you may remember, phase one has been in construction and is almost done. Design of phase two was happening while we were starting design, uh, construction of phase one. And so there were some things that changed in phase one that didn't get quite picked up in our phase two plan. So we're having to deal with some relocation to make everything fit and having proper access to that fueling station, maintenance, operation of valves, switchgear, other things to make sure that we have um, proper operation of the plant and, and the supply for generators and other things. So this is the fifth change order, the sixth change order, but technically there was, it's really the fifth one, number two was voided. There was an issue with numbering. Um, and this is the first change order that really rises to the level of council approval. The other ones were very minor. I'm happy to answer any other details on this.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, just before I turn it over for a motion, does anyone in the chambers wish to make a comment on this item? Second call for comment. Third and final call. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four, three, five, four, authorizing city manager to execute change order, change order number six to the construction contract with Apollo Inc. for the West Pasco Water Treatment Improvements Phase Two project.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milley, right? Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item number ten on the agenda, unfinished business. We do have a continuation of right-of-way vacation for Snake River Agricultural, Agriculture LLC. And do we have anyone speaking on this?
Yeah, I, just a short uh, statement that the staff is, is asking that this item be continued to the July seventeenth, uh, regular council meeting. Um, staff uh, did receive it, uh, our, and confirm our information and communications with the Washington State Department of Transportation uh, regarding this effort, um, and um, our proposed recommendation, um, that was recommended to council back in early June. Um, we do recommend that this item is, is continued to July seventeenth.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano, uh, Campos.
I'm, I'm not that good-looking, Madam Mayor.
I was meaning that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Uh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question for Mr. Ferguson. We've, we've closed the public hearing on this matter, correct? And it, so our only action of us right now is just asking us to just continue this particular item, so we can deliberate on further.
Yeah, so at the point, uh, based on the statute as well as our code, which reflects the statute, uh, the public hearing has been held. Uh, there's no requirement that you uh, uh, can only ha- hold one. Uh, you just have to have, uh, the one statutory required uh, hearing. But at this point, uh, you're on the map where you're considering whether you want to move forward with, with a vacation uh, or not. Uh, and the way it left off at the last meeting, there was more information that uh, council gained from uh, the petitioner. Uh, asked staff to go forward and try to uh, investigate that and then come back with some additional information. Uh, it looks like it was an inadvertent oversight that it was continued to a specific date, uh, as opposed to being tabled uh, on a particular uh, the date in the future or meeting in the future. So uh, oversight on our part, but um, the, so that's why it's back in front of you to uh, request a continuance, because you did continue it to this particular date certain. So uh, it's not ready. Uh, we don't have the information that uh, council asked us to bring back. Um, and uh, we'll certainly uh, continue to work on that, but uh, and think we'll be able to accomplish that, obviously, between now and the next time. But uh, to be clear, uh, this is a policy decision. This is not a quasi-judicial matter where you have an applicant who has a particular vested interest in any particular uh, land right. Um, and so this is a policy matter that you have to go forward with, uh, with the understanding that it is uh, it is property that has been dedicated to the city for the public benefit, and so you're gonna have to go through this process and make sure that you can meet those requirements, all those requirements, uh, to uh, to decide to vacate it. So um, we're, we're gonna uh, keep at it and get you that information, and uh, we'll come back and I think we can, we can get this thing done. One way or the other.
Any further comments? Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you. Um, I, I will clarify for the record that um, I was the one who made the motion to continue, to continue it, and I, I chose this date intentionally because I didn't want to leave this hanging out for indefinitely while we're letting applicants, um, you know, kind of feel like they're, they're, they're boundary. I do appreciate that there's a resource limitations that we have of being able to, to pull the information together and such. I just wanted to clarify that. I did do that intentionally. It was not inadvertent. Um, I am, I'm in favor of continuing this because public right-of-way, you don't, you don't get to get it back if you get it wrong. So it's important for us to deliberate on this and protect our, our taxpayers for the city of Pasco. But I am keenly aware that we um, we've had a long history of um, it, of, of delaying in our planning department for reasons both good and ones that I, I struggle harder to um, to defend. So I'm hoping that this, that this date of July seventeenth will be the final day that we will continue it to. And so, um, because at that point in time, I, I feel I'm gonna be ready to make a decision whether staff is or not. Um, I don't want to continue to hold, to, to, to push some of these items off indefinitely. So um, so I just, I just want to be clear on my statements on that, that if I ma- that when I make this motion, um, if it passes, I'm being very intentional of the July seventeenth date, um, certain, so we can reach a resolution for uh, the petitioner and for us, the city council, and for staff. So, um, yeah, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilman Serrano.
Um, Mr. Gonzalez, did I understand that you said you've reached out and have received some information? Is that correct?
No, we, we've looked back at the information provided by uh, that was submitted by the applicant um, on June fifth, along with the communications that took place prior. Um, and we'll be able to sufficiently address those comments and concerns um, on July seventeenth.
Okay. Will it require you reaching out to a third party, or is that can be completed internally?
Internally.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
I move to continue the proposed right-of-way vacation for Snake River Agriculture LLC to the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Councilman Milley? And Councilman Serrano. So that's five to two. Thank you, and it passes. Um, and with that, we'll move on to item number eleven, new business. None listed. And item number twelve, miscellaneous discussion. I do want to make two comments before I hand it over. I want to say, first thing I want to say is congratulations, Ms. Igdel. Uh, I, I did see you uh, over the weekend at the Juneteenth celebration. Um, thank you for being there. Monday was your official first date, if I'm not mistaken. So welcome back. Uh, very much anticipated to have you back. Um, and perfect position. Um, second thing I wanted to mention is, I'm gonna hand it over to uh, Deputy Chief Dunbar. There was a graduation over the weekend as well, correct?
Yes, ca- uh, Mayor, we did. Graduated our uh, Recruit Academy twenty twenty-three dash one with sixteen candidates, uh, three from Richland and thirteen from us. The reason we had so many is because of the twenty twenty-two Safer Grant that we were awarded, and you guys graciously accepted. Uh, we're also in the middle of building Station Eighty-five, where those fifteen, not necessarily those fifteen will go, but the fifteen will allow us to staff that station. So um, we got, many of our uh, candidates received awards. We did, we got the highest achiever, uh, so we got the smartest guy. Unfortunately, Richland got the hard charger, 'cause that guy was not, he was a force to be reckoned with. So, um, yes, they are now, uh, each one has been assigned to a shift. They'll start an eight-week rotation where they don't really count, but they're learning how to live a shift life and starting their first-year apprenticeship program. So when you see, if you go by fire stations and see extra bodies, those are your guys that we hired uh, to staff Station Eighty-five. those are your guys that we hired uh to staff Station eighty-five. And hopefully in January, February, we'll get them spread out over there, so we'll be back to normal staffing and everybody won't be stepping on each other's toes, so thank you for that support, just wanted to pass along, that's why many of us worked at the Juneteenth celebration, we were over celebrating our candidates graduating, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I did briefly see some of your men out there and they were trying to do their rounds and socialize and do the outreach, but congratulations to all the candidates, especially to the thirteen that coming to Pasco. Any other comments from councilmembers, any other miscellaneous discussion?
I just kinda wanted to double back, so catch me if this is not for that, but earlier, um, testimonies and, um, regarding downtown Pasco and this wonderful group that is in front of us. Um, I first want to say I commend you for where your heart places, um, for Pasco, I think it's awesome. It's very moving to see your commitment. But there's a but, um, for me, um, policies, I've heard the word policy, I think I've heard the word procedure if I'm correct, if not, I'm gonna add it. With all due respect, there's a reason for those, because I believe that they create create order, safety and clear direction. So although I didn't hear a ask yet, and I'm asking, what is it? What is the need, um, because I I heard the fifteen-dollar fee, but I don't know if we're being chastised or we need to sit at the table and communicate on how we can come together. So I just want to be clear, because your work should not go unnoticed. But I'm a policy and procedure person, and it does create safety. So from my understanding, um, the way the your process is going is not only a blessing to so many, even with the testimony of the young man, but we have to maintain the city to be safe and in order and well-presentable. So how can we do that together? The if, is it the fifteen-dollar fee that I'm hearing, that that's a hindrance? Um, again, I say let's work together, but why aren't we working together collectively regarding the water, the food? Together, um, and how we can make this thing work, cuz we definitely do not need to be divided with policies and procedures, they should bring us together to move forward. So I'm, I just want clarity there, because if you're asking for something, the vision is there. I'm asking that you just make it plain, so that we could just get on board, um, and be a collaborative, um, great people to take care of Pasco, not just the C two zone, we have a whole city we're looking at. So we need to take care as many people as we can, although it may not go away, but let's be effective together. Um, and not divided. So I just, I just want a clear ask, if it's the fifteen dollars, talk about fifteen-dollar fee. Um, there's ways to do that, but we are definitely, and I'm gonna go on a whole branch, we are not in any way, um, disappointed, upset or frustrated with what you all are doing, I just, I'm 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 very proud of it. But we, when we present things like this, I just need full clarity on what the ask is. Be very, very clear on what it is, so that we can deliberate, I think fairly, and come back at reasonable time to make it work. Um, the other one was about uh, there was something alluded to directly, I heard the word restrict- restricted by the city. I don't agree with that, again, I'm back to my first statement. Um, I don't think there's restrictions, there's processes, policies and procedures that I believe, I believe we should all respect. And we have to come to the table again and make this thing work. So I'm I'm, I'm pleading for good conversation, healthy conversation, and I know it's gonna be full of prosperity, uh, more testimonies if we just do it together.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Councilman Campos.
Councilman Brown, thank you so much for your comments, I I've have the same sentiments myself, you know, we, we've gotta treat everything with fairness and it's not just uh, the people that are providing some of these outreach services downtown, we would, we would ask anybody to do the same thing, follow our policies and procedures. And so I just wanna highlight that over the last, what was it? Last week, we could, staff asked us to basically come back to the table and deliberate on what our priorities were for some of the homeless issues that we're facing in our city. And so I would just ask that, you know, entities like Clean Sweep or anyone else who's interested to stay engaged over this part of the process, because we're going to, um, you know, be the voice of the people, so our emails are probably even more effective than using the public comment cuz we can engage and interact uh via email, via phone call. And our 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 cell phone numbers are are published on there, our emails are published on the city's website, and we can be interactive with you up to the point where we give feedback to the city, and again, as we are conduits for the people, you know, that's probably the better avenue to, um, get those asks out in front of us, so we can then you know, as as a, as a whole, as a collective, work out what that looks like, if we have to revise policies and procedures to make them align better with what our current situations are. Um, I think that's what Councilman Brown's alluding to, is let's, let's go back and and sharpen the grindstone or the axe, right? So, um, I just say that as a council member who represents a lot of the uh, you know, homeless in the downtown area, again, I live right off Athan Lewis. I've seen a lot of faces down there, um, we've made it a priority for us to get out, engage with one another and pass some direction to staff, so just would ask every interested party to just stay engaged over the coming weeks and send stuff to our emails and get in touch with us, that's all.
Thank you for that, Mayor Potamaloni?
Thank you, I'll jump on that same bandwagon, because um, I think a lot of the dialogue has really revolved around the city of Pasco wanting to stop people from volunteering in our downtown. And that's certainly not what any of us are intending, nor was our c- code intended to do. Um, but unfortunately, you're not the only organization that has come downtown, and some have left um, a wake of disaster, um, after they finished their service. Where we had, where we've had downtown business owners complaining about the fact that we have entire blocks completely covered with discarded clothing and with food wrappings and um ha- truly hazardous situations, and that's not you. Um, and none of us want, uh, want to be seen, and we we don't, we're not accusing you of being that, but because there has been other people who have left um, problems, um, we need one one set of rules, as Councilmember Brown was was saying. So I do think that this is something in our code that we want to take a look at, um, I do want to dust this off and want to understand how we're making sure that it really that it, that it allows what it needs to allow in a safe and 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 effective fashion, but isn't overly burdensome, so um, a step further I'll go is is to say that I I believe that it'd be very beneficial for staff to to, let's peel that open and start looking into, what was it originally intended to do? Is it doing those, and is the, and is what we're currently enforcing as a city, is it being effective? Um, is it being uh fairly and evenly used, um, um, for every, for anyone trying to do an event downtown? So I I would, I would, I do want to peel that back, I think that is worth looking at. But to your Councilmember Campos' point, um, we're sensitive to the fact that we have a limited number of resources, and we've asked staff to look very hard at how do we treat our homeless population in downtown, what can we do more? How can we do better services and how can we collaborate with the community on how to do that? And of course, us wanting it doesn't mean that staff magically appears able to do so, so, um, I I wish, um, that it would never work that easily, so, yeah, so I've, um, I I know, I personally asked the city manager to to identify us with a point of contact um, who perhaps can focus more directly on this instead of as spread across as there are the resources are. He said he's gonna look into that, so I'll be interested to see what the city manager, um, does to help us figure out how to move forward and how to share these messages and engage with the community, so you have one person to come to and say, I've got an idea on how this sucks for me, and I want it to not suck, so we can do our mission. Um, I think we all want to see that, so, um, anyways, I'm I'm hopeful that we can come we can, we can, we can navigate through this and make sure that we're, we're, we're treating everyone fairly and well. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown?
This the, a last piece, um, I'm proud of our, our council goals, and they're on a website, they're in the back. Um, but bullet point two, under community safety, is right where you guys are. In my opinion, I think you're doing an excellent job, but the city is concerned, I think we are concerned. And it's impactful, it's infectious and it's effective. I think if we do it together, to my earlier point, um, it'll work because it's in our goals. We have, I have mine with me right here, so I know that we're committed to doing it, now we gotta talk about it in order to be about it. So again, I just encourage you, I piggyback on Councilman Campos, and I'm just reiterating because this is heavy on our city. And we all love our city, but if we're going in different directions, it's just mayhem. And we're not focusing on the ones that really need to help, so I just encourage you, get more engaged, we have the city app. Shut it down, make it go out of business if you work it, um, the app is there, um, I've tried it. I'm so glad it worked when I tried it, so it works. Um, again, our city goes, take them with you, keep them with you, hold them account, hold us accountable if we slip on something. But it's the communication that's the key to success, so I applaud you all, continue doing it, any way I can help support by policies, by rules and by safety regulations, I'll be there, so God bless you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'll disclose it up and say, have one last reminder. Um, we do have the Ask Pasco app, if you've not downloaded that, please do so, um, and reach out to us. Okay, thank you, with that, I'll pass it over to our new deputy city manager, Ms. Igdel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and you actually stole one of my, um, miscellaneous items, which was going to be uh, the graduation, we have one more that I will ask our interim director Gonzalez, um, to speak on that. We believe that the residents would be very interested in.
Uh, good evening again, council, uh, just another reminder that the twenty twenty-four applications for the Community Development Block Grant uh, program are currently being accepted until uh June thirtieth. Uh, anyone interested in the community can certainly reach out to our office and ask for more information, we can help them apply for that. I I do wanna emphasize that this year, for the first time, that uh, the, around the local tri-cities area, there was an emphasis to align that CDBG program with the Consolidated Home Program, which is an effort done, uh, completed regionally by our, our uh, CDBG administrators here in the tri-cities. And they have three specific goals, uh, based on community feedback and and survey data, and those include um, improving affordable housing opportunities for lower-income individuals and households, uh, improve community infrastructure, public facilities and local economies, and the reduction of homelessness and identifying support priority for public services, so those three are key priorities, and so if there's any applicants interested uh, with those and their missions, certainly reach out to the Department of Community Economic Development, we can help you apply for those uh, those funds, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilwoman Roach?
Just wanna say thank you too, I'm gonna, I guess that it's the Planning Commission that set that, um, priority to to focus CDBG funds towards the, the Down Payment Assistance Program. Um, it's something that I I share with people that don't know that exists, but if you have not been a first-time homeowner and you um, qualify, you can apply for that, and I know that it's been transformational for those who have been able to access it. So, um, you know, the topic of homelessness is one that we've been talking about for some time now and um, trying in our own individual capacities to contribute in our volunteer ways. Uh, but I wanna say thank you to Clean Sweep for what they do, uh, making sure that people have water, the most basic need is um, it's critical, and so I think that it's safe to say that you provide that bottle of water for that person, they avoid dehydration, they avoid a a trip with our, our city police or our fire department to the hospital because of not having that water that they need, so just know that it's, um, we see, I see that it is all interconnected and, um, appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, any further comments? All right, and with that, Chief Ruski's not here. Our favorite part of the uh agenda, executive session, we do have a need for executive session. Uh, and I hope you all stay and stick around for that one, we do have a discussion with legal counsel about legal risk or of current or proposed action per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero um, one I, and for ten minutes, so we will be in executive session, uh, till eight thirty-four. Thank you, everyone. It is eight thirty-three and we do have a need to extend for five more minutes to come back at eight thirty, gosh.
Eight thirty-eight.
Eight thirty-eight. I was gonna say thirty-nine, eight thirty-eight. It is eight forty-nine and with no further items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.